We hope to make this a productive meeting. There's some people I want to introduce. We have, on the stage here, we have Bill Richards, who has, formerly with the Arizona Attorney General's Office, now a consultant, but has worked on this matter for numerous years. We have Bruce Weisen, I think all of you know who he is, the special fiduciary. And we have Dave Sonnenwright of the Utah Attorney General's Office. He will do the PowerPoint presentation that he put together for Mark Schurtliff to do. He will do it, and Mark gets here on the tail end, he can finish up. We also have some others here, both from the Utah Attorney General's Office and the Arizona Attorney General's Office as well, as well representing the special fiduciary. We have Sandra Kane. Sandra, would you stand up? Sandra Kane with Arizona Attorney General's Office. We have Julie Jones with the Utah Attorney General's Office, and David Wolfe with the Utah Attorney General's Office. Also Jeff Shields with the counsel for the special fiduciary. Let's see if I can cover it. Oh, we have Paul Murphy. Where's Paul Murphy? Paul is here. We need to recognize Paul.
Did you recognize Roger?
Roger Hool. Roger Hool. Roger's on the side. All right. Roger, I can't see you with these lights, and I have a hard time seeing anybody. Our purpose tonight here is to try and get your input back.
Maybe not that much, but fifteen, you know.
We're going to hear from Bruce Weisen about plans. We're going to hear from the Utah Attorney General's Office about plans. Our purpose here is not to go back and recreate history. What's done is done. We're here. Not everybody's happy with it. We understand all of that. And I don't know if anybody's happy with it, but we are where we are, and we would like to move forward. And the purpose of this gathering is to move forward. We know where the courts have ruled. We know where we stand now. We know the legal basis on which everyone, you as well as us, can operate. We would like to hear your input. We're going to put some ideas out there, some thoughts. Nobody's feet are in stone on this. Please understand that. There have been no decisions made. These ideas that are being put out are an attempt to generate some ideas, an attempt to have you give your input. We want Bruce Weisen to give his input as well. These ideas have come, originated with the Utah Attorney General's Office. Please do not understand these to be final plans. They are nowhere near final plans. Final plans have not been made by any means. Before I turn it over to Dave Sonnenwright, I would like to do one thing, and I've actually done this in the speaking assignment down here before, but I'd kind of like to find out where all of you are from. And, you know, rough speaking. Now, let me start. Would you just raise hands for those who are from Centennial Park? Okay, thank you. Those from Hilldale. All right. Now, I realize Centennial Park is in Colorado City, but I always kind of consider Colorado City to be east of the highway. So those that are in Colorado City, east of the highway, raise your hand. Oh, well, okay. That is very good. We've got a good fix, and I'm happy to see that. Lots of hands from Colorado City. I'm very happy to see that. So, thank you very much, and I will turn the time over to Dave Sonnenwright. We are anticipating Mark Schurtliff joining us in a half hour or so, and he is really the one in charge of the meeting and will take charge and conduct it at the point he arrives. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. As Jerry mentioned, I'm going to be giving a PowerPoint presentation, which was going to be the first half of, maybe that's a little better, the first half of what Mark Schurtliff was going to do, and then I'm sure he'll have comments and further thoughts. Welcome to the UEP Trust Community Meeting. The goals for this meeting, as Jerry mentioned, are to, we'll talk briefly about legal status of trust. We're not going to go into a great deal of detail on that. Just update people, make sure we're on the same page. We're going to discuss four possible options for the future of the trust as our office sees them, and they are, as Jerry mentioned, just preliminary thoughts about the possible directions we could go. And the most important thing we're going to do here is we're going to listen to you, the members of the community. We want to hear your questions, your suggestions, your concerns. We want to have some feedback from you, and obviously, there may be options on the table that we should be considering, that none of us have really moved very far down that path, or maybe we've thought about them, thought there was an obstacle to them. So, we really do value your input, and at the end of this slide presentation, I am going to also show some contact information. There isn't enough time for everybody to give detailed discussions about ideas that we have here, but we really do value and want those ideas, and we'll give you some places to send them. So, the agenda tonight, I think Jerry's already getting where we're going to have this, then Mark will speak if he's here. Bruce Weisen is going to speak a bit about one of the options in particular. We'll open the floor to some comments from other counsel who are present, and we'll open the floor to everybody, and of course, Billy will speak after Bruce, if you're so Jerry already went over this, these, pardon me for, if we go back there. Jerry already went over these items a little bit. These are just general concepts. This is still in the informational thought phase. This is simply for discussion purposes, and we recognize that there may be some problems with these options that will need to be thought out and addressed before anything can be presented to any court. That said, let's take a look at the current legal status of the trust and lawsuits. The Utah Supreme Court has ruled that challenges to the 2006 reformed trust are now too late. That is, the 2006 reformed trust is now the legal document that governs. The Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals, based on that ruling, has ordered Judge Benson to dismiss the lawsuit that's sitting in Salt Lake City in federal court. That hasn't happened yet, but we anticipate it will happen shortly. At that point, Judge Lindbergh will be free to take action in the UEP Trust probate case. I hope we're not going too fast, because I figure you all pretty much have a sense of what I'm talking about. And the trust probate case in front of Judge Lindbergh, we anticipate that she'll be looking for some concrete ideas as to how to move forward with that case in the fairly near future, months, not long, long time periods out. So that's why we're trying to put together, get input and put together a plan that might work. As I mentioned, at this point legally, the status is that the UEP Trust operation is governed by the 2006 reformed trust. So, the 2006 reformed trust is the one that Judge Lindbergh approved, obviously, and it has three general characteristics, characteristics that are dividing, designed as principles of it. First, that it's a charitable trust. Second, that it can't benefit any illegal practices, polygamy, per se, and third, it's religiously neutral. The, I seem to be having some technical problems here. If you can help me with one of that, just jumped on the. So, the beneficiaries of the trust are anyone who made contributions to the trust or to the FLDS church before 2006, plus anyone who's made contributions after that date to the trust. It doesn't matter if you're FLDS or non-FLDS, and a contribution can mean anything, basically. It can be time, talents, money, property, et cetera. My first use of an iPad for a presentation. Now, the 2006 trust provides for a board of trustees. But a board of trustees has never been put in place. The trust anticipates that eventually there will be a board of trustees, and that the special fiduciary who's running the trust under the supervision of the court will eventually turn over authority for the running of the trust to the board of trustees. Judge Lindbergh would appoint those initial trustees, but the trust says they have to demonstrate an ability to act independently in the best interest of the trusts. There would be an odd number of trustees, five, seven, or nine, with staggered six-year terms. So everyone would start, and a third of them would disappear, dingers would be replaced, et cetera, and eventually they'd all serve six-year terms. The board itself would be self-fulfilling at that point. It would replace its own membership from that initial stage on. It seemed to really like to do that there. You know what? I may just do it this way, because I know you hit the, no, that's not something I want. I don't know who's that. There we go. My doctor says I'm not contagious. I just have some stuff in my lungs. We're now going to talk about four options that we see at the moment as possible directions to look at for the future of the UEP Trust. The first option is to simply do what the trust, the 2006 reformed trust anticipated. When it was created, it was anticipated that the board of trustees would take it over and operate it. The special fiduciary's role would at some point be wrapped up, and the court would have increasingly limited involvement in the trust from that point forward. That option is still very much on the table. A second option would be to dissolve the trust and to distribute the assets in kind, individual people getting individual property pieces. A third option would also dissolve the trust, but would result in a liquidation of the assets. They would all be sold, and I'll get into more detail on that option in particular in a little while. And finally, the fourth option is, we could negotiate a settlement and a solution that everybody participates in a negotiated settlement of some sort through mediation or other process. So, let's talk about option one, nominating a new board of trustees. This would, of course, allow the UEP Trust to continue, but it would continue with a phased return of community control over the assets as the special fiduciary's role would wind up. Now, the board, of course, would have to have cooperation from both FLDS and non-FLDS, working cooperatively and acting independently to make it work. Most decisions would be made by the board, not the court. And I'll get into that in a second, because the provisions of the 2006 reformed trust say that Judge Lindbergh will turn over in phases, but they're not defined. So she has the ability to say, okay, I think you're able to handle this thing as a community now. Now let's look at this next thing. You may be able to handle that thing as a community. The board will, does have to follow the 2006 reformed trust, and the board can give property to trust participants that allows, the trust allows for the deeding of property to individuals if that's what the trust thinks is appropriate. So, potentially, that's the quickest solution, because in theory, if the right trustees all stepped up and Judge Lindbergh approved them, tomorrow morning, we're starting down that path, after she had a hearing and things of that sort. Whether that's in reality, of course, depends on whether the right people could be found and the board put together. Option two, dissolving the UEP Trust and distributing the assets. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. I think, I think Mr. Weisen's going to talk a little bit more about the mechanics of how that might work. So I'm just going to say that the concept here would be that people would receive property in kind. That is, assets would be, a deed would be given to a certain individual for a certain piece of property. And if it took me a few minutes, can I just leave that for you to finish up on that topic?
Sure, sure.
And some of the ideas you've got on that. Yeah. So I'll skip a few slides here, and start talking about this third option, which involves dissolving the trust and liquidating the assets instead of distributing them in kind. The idea here is that we would first appraise all the assets, and then we would have a liquidation plan in which everybody who has, who has participated in the trust, we talked about how a trust plan participant is somebody who at some point made a contribution to the trust. So if you had made a contribution, if your current FLDS or former FLDS made a contribution, you would be submitting a form and saying, for these years, I did these things. And based on that, you would get a credit. We'll talk about these distribution share credits a little more in detail, but basically, what we would do is the assets would be sold at auction. You could use your credits to help buy residential property. Commercial property would probably be sold for cash, because we would need to raise the money to do the various things we need to do. So, how would these distribution share credits work? One idea, and it's again, just one idea, would be that there would be a year's worth of credit for each year in which a person gave their efforts to the UEP Trust. And the participants could then use those credits, you might have a certain number of credits, to either do one of three things. You could bid on individual residential property yourself. You could block your shares with other people to bid on a collective group of residential property. Or you could save your credits, not use them at all, and then when everything is done and all the money comes in from sale of commercial property, residential property that was paid for with something other than credits, you would get a share of that money that was in the pot. So you would either end up with having used your credits to help purchase property, or you'd end up with a share of money from the end distribution. Non-residential property would be paid, would be sold for cash, because we first have to pay the trust liabilities, including, of course, the special fiduciary. And then we have to distribute, depending on how many credits we have. Let's look at an example or two, just to give you an idea. The numbers, of course, are not meaningful at this point. We haven't done the appraisals. Don't get hung up on the numbers. They're just random numbers that we pulled out of thin air to do the math easily. So let's assume for a moment that the trust's assets, fully appraised, were $100 million right now. And let's assume that when we added up all the years of service of all the people who claimed in it, there were $50,000, $50,000 credits. Well, that would mean that everybody got a credit for $2,000 per credit. That would be the value. So if somebody had participated for 30 years, they would get $60,000 worth of credit themselves. And they could use that credit to bid on residential property, and it would be the same as cash. And again, I don't know at this point, because we haven't done the appraisal, how that relates to either the value of the property or the amount of money that the shares would be. We're not at that point in the process. But that's the fundamental concept. You get your credits based on your portion of the total value of the assets, and then you could use those credits to bid on residential property. So, another thing you do that is the cash-out option. So after we've already bought, sold all the property, there's $20 million left in cash. And let's say hypothetically, out of that $50,000 we were talking about earlier, only $8,000 credits still have not been used. Now, if they didn't use them to buy personal property, they'd just keep those folks held on to their credits. That would mean each of those credits, at this point, when there's $20 million after we paid all the expenses of the trust, would be worth $2,500. So if somebody who had 20 credits for 20 years' service would now receive $50,000 in cash, that person wouldn't have received any property. They'd just get that cash payment, basically. Finally, the fourth option would be simply to negotiate a new arrangement. And that, of course, could be anything. If everybody comes to the table through their counsel and leadership and wants to work together, there are a broad range of ways we can solve problems. We can address a lot of issues that are harder to address in a purely court-driven system. So, for example, one issue could be how the cemetery should be handled. What should we do with people's rights and responsibilities, and what we should govern, and things like that. Those are things that are easier to deal with, probably, in a negotiated context, where people are heard and given an opportunity to try to work out a solution themselves than in other contexts. However, any new settlement will require approval by Judge Lindbergh. At the end of the day, it's Judge Lindbergh who's going to be the one deciding what the next step is. We only can make recommendations. Our office can make recommendations. The Arizona Attorney General's Office, Mr. Weisen, other counsel, can make recommendations. But it is up to Judge Lindbergh. So, a couple of things that compare the property, these four options. First of all, how is the property allocated? Well, if there's a new board, the property allocation really doesn't, is up to the board. It's just going to be running the trust. The board will run the trust and make decisions as to who will live where, and as to whether or not some property should be deeded out, or what to do, what the economic needs are of the community, and the board will simply run the trust. The property stays, for the most part, allocated, still collectively. Distribution. There will be deeds given to the property based upon recommendations, and again, Mr. Weisen, again, we'll hear some more details about how that might work, I think. Liquidation, the free market will determine the price. And also, then the shares can be either kept individually or collectively. So it would be possible for a large, for a group of people to pool a large group of shares and say, we want this general area. We're going to bid on this whole area here and maintain a unified collective ownership of property in an area. It would also be possible for someone who didn't want to participate in that to try to buy a single specific piece of property that person wanted to try to own. But the free market would ultimately determine the price for any particular piece of property, and who would buy it. Negotiation, of course, could involve some of all of these aspects. It's possible to see a scenario, we can envision a scenario, where we could do all of these things to some extent, where some people might be, have specific deeded property given to them. Some property could be sold at auction. There might be some use of this credit system or something else, and there might be some property that's just kept together in a, in a trust and run by a new board. The one thing I want to add, and I think this is very clearly the position of our office, is that current UEP Trust liabilities, including the special fiduciary's fees and expenses, have to be paid under any option, which means that no matter what the option is, we may need to sell some property to raise cash. In terms of communal use, again, the same concept applies. With the new board, the property remains in the trust, so the communal use remains. With a distribution, each person would get individual property, and what they do with that property after that may be up to them, but they would, people would get individual deeds. With liquidation, it's possible to purchase individually or collectively, and again, negotiation gives us all these options and the ability to do some other things. So, here are two ways to contact the Utah Attorney General's Office. Of course, we're always free to contact Mr. Weisen, the Arizona Attorney General's Office, but here are a couple of ways you can contact our office. We have a new email that we just set up, utahag-uag-uep@utah.gov. And you can also just mail us at our office, general number, attention to UEP Trust team, and we'll get that. And we do welcome your comments and hope that you can provide some insight and help us to better understand the situation that we face and the best ways to move forward towards a solution that benefits everybody. Do we have, let me just check for one second here. Have you heard from Mark?
Let me recommend, if Bruce Weisen or Bill Richards would like to make some opening comments, then I have some of the questions to be presented. And when we started this meeting at about 6:15, the Attorney General was in St. George, so I'll be giving you a few.
How long do you think he has, then?
I think he should be showing up soon. I guess we'll find out if he's a speeder or not.
I'm wondering. It might be better for you not to be interrupted, have him walk in right in the middle. Do you want to take five minutes, if there are any questions about the slide presentation first? Do you think we're close on?
Why don't we let them make a few comments, and then we'll, 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 the questions.
I'm sure Mark will love to hear your comments, too. Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and say a few words. I'm a little congested, so bear with me as I hack my way through. But we're certainly, and I speak for the, for the trust, the board of advisors, and those that we counsel with, that we're certainly in agreement that we need to be going forward. Somebody sitting on the back row back here said something like, yeah, we need to go forward, not backward, and that's, that's very appropriate. David mentioned that Judge Lindbergh is going to be making a final decision, and that, that is true. Everything that's discussed here has not been reviewed with Judge Lindbergh, and she will have the final say. Board of advisors was given a challenging task of coming up with a distribution plan, and early on in my administration, I felt that the trust was not working, and that it should be resolved and the assets distributed. And we spent several million dollars fighting that concept. But we think with Judge Benson's decision being overturned, the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals affirming the direction that we've been taking, that now is the time that we can move forward. And the board has come up with a plan of distribution, a model, whatever you want to call it, and we've tweaked it, and in addition, we've spent considerable time discussing with FLDS members that are not followers of Warren Jeffs. And the two groups, if you will, for non-f followers of Warren Jeffs and the trust, are very, very close in what we would like to see happen. The overriding principle, if you will, of this distribution plan is, has some of the following, and bear in mind, and I believe David mentioned this, but it's worth repeating, that it's a requirement that the, whatever distribution plan we have conforms to the reformed trust. The distribution plan will create, here are the principles that we believe in. The distribution plan will create the least disruptive program in terms of displacing families. Distribution plan meets or exceeds the financial obligations of the trust. The distribution plan minimizes the financial burden on the beneficiaries. Distribution plan will demonstrate fairness and equity to all partners. The distribution plan will have a method of dealing with disputes, including an internal appeal process. And the distribution plan's foundation, a very critical part, is the subdivision of the property. Where we are right now is that Judge Shoemate in Fifth District Court has ordered the subdivision of Hilldale to be recorded, subject to the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals decision. Now, we've got a favorable decision on the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals, but in the meantime, Hilldale City filed an appeal with the Utah Supreme Court, opposing the subdivision of Hilldale. If we overcome the appeal at the Utah Supreme Court, distribution of property in Hilldale can start occurring rather quickly. My engineers have told me that in terms of Colorado City, that there's approximately $35,000, $40,000 worth of work to be done if a town, city, town of Colorado City cooperates with the engineers. To date, that has not happened, and I would anticipate that there would be many, many times that amount required if Colorado City friskates and puts hurdles in front of the The distribution plan will maintain the sanctity of the individual belief system. We don't want to upset that of each individual. Distribution plan will maintain common access to the common facilities. The distribution plan will preserve community gardens. The distribution plan will put all commercial and educational properties to highest of its uses, and the distribution plan will also address Canadian issues. And those are the principles upon which our plan is based, and we anticipate that some members of our housing committee currently, advisory board members, would be expanded, and that they would be given authority to make the distribution. So we don't have a miserable fiduciary making those decisions. We have people that live in the community doing that. And the appeal process hasn't been totally worked out, but we'd like to see some kind of appeal process. One plan that was floated in, one that we have, this is kind of a rough draft, is that the distribution committee or board, maybe, maybe they become trustees with distribution authority only and... only, and then I can still deal with all the litigation and knockups and all those other things. And so we have a fiduciary end of board of trustees. I'm not, we're not sure quite how that can be done, but it certainly can be done. And perhaps then, if the committee, whoever makes that decision, somebody wants to appeal, then perhaps that appeal process could go to me. I'm not sure we want to overburn Judge Lindbergh, but perhaps it could go to Judge Lindbergh. Perhaps some other person or small group could be retained to adjudicate appeals that are, that's a detail that hasn't been decided. The distribution plan would provide for notice to be given to anyone who feels that they should be a beneficiary of the plan. And then there's a timeframe for them in which to register their belief of plan. We want to accommodate all beliefs, and some people in the community are not able to petition at this point in time. And so I think that we've been talking about a several-year process, timeframe for that process. And in the meantime, somebody that might potentially have a claim on a house on Hildale New, for example, might not be able to petition for whatever reason, for some number of years, maybe three, maybe four, maybe five years. At some point, there's got to be a time certain where that cuts off. But maybe somebody else is living in that house at that time, and then there'd be a combination made there for occupancy fees and payment of property taxes. Our distribution plan calls for beneficiaries to pay back, to pay all back taxes. We're very delinquent in Washington County, having to get special permission, perhaps from the county commissioners, to forego property tax foreclosures this coming year. It's that critical. Colorado City is also several years behind. And so somebody receiving, potentially receiving a deed, one of the things that would be required is the payment of back property taxes on that property and the payment of back occupancy fees. In addition, the individual would be paid, required to be paid, required to pay closing costs, which are probably less than $1,000, and some amount of fee for the subdivision of administration that took, that took. And preliminarily, the board is, and in essence, to pay for the land upon which the properties were built. And the board has tentatively come up with an amount of $5,000. Our distribution plan, we believe, accommodates situations on a case-by-case basis. Again, we want the minimum disruption. We don't want to have all the properties put up in the, up in the air and have a, have a, an auction, have everything up for grabs. We prefer case-by-case. It may take a bit longer, but we think the process will be less disruptive and more equitable. Because of the differing laws that we have in Canada, we're trying to do, in very preliminary stages, the same thing, having a community group make decisions relative to housing. Because of the laws and restrictions there, we would not be able to distribute titles, but we would be looking at some kind of lease, long-term lease, or some type of an agreement that won't get filed up with Canadian laws. The, our resolution contains what we consider to be an equitable distribution formula that has weighted factors for occupancy, construction contributions, years of service to the trust and to the community. And the board went through several scenarios of people actually living in houses and working through the formula. It is literally a formula, and the first premise is based on value. And although we are logged in the Attorney General's office, we're putting in the time and effort on the various options that they've come up with, I would, we disagree, and I disagree with having appraisals. We think that would be a difficult thing to do, very expensive and very time-consuming. And we, in our formula, and again, it's a mathematical formula, we would take the assessed value by the county, and then we would discount, because we feel that the assessed values are probably higher than appropriate. And we're talking a discount in the range of 25% or 30%. Again, this has not been put in stone or anything like that, but then the formula, again, a mathematical formula progresses from there. And so each individual could calculate then what his or her particular situation would cost. And the idea is to minimize that. And one of the formula provisions is, was drafted from the, we plagiarized from the Utah AGs, where 1% of the value is reduced for each year of service to the trust or to the community. And anyway, again, the idea is to minimize the cost, but again, knowing that the distribution has to occur, and knowing that the debts of the trust need to be resolved, we think that this plan accomplishes that. We do not have a PowerPoint presentation. That was not offered to us, but even if it had been offered to us, I would not have been able to participate. We've discussed, we've preliminarily reviewed our plan, but legal counsel, miserable lawyers that we all love to hate, hate the love and all that other stuff, have not reviewed that in detail. And I just am very hesitant whether it be a PowerPoint presentation or distribution handouts or something to distribute this until we've, until it's been carefully reviewed and scrutinized by the attorneys and found to be in compliance, but primarily with the reformed trust, and that it meets all the equitable standards and everything that we would like to have. I probably haven't taken my 20 minutes, but Bill, if you'd like to go from there.
I didn't know I get 20 minutes.
You don't have to.
No, I will take 20 minutes, don't worry. Again, let me just reintroduce myself. My name is Bill Richards. I am an attorney, and right now apply to practice in Tempe, Arizona. But I served on the staff of Attorney General Terry Goddard for a number of years, and I was the lead trial counsel for the office in connection with the trust litigation from the beginning until I left the office at the end of 2010. I am here tonight as a representative of the Arizona Attorney General's office, and acting as outside counsel for the agency at this point. And I can go, Bruce Weisen one better. He doesn't have a PowerPoint. Well, I don't have one either. But I also don't even have a specific plan, which some of you may be thinking is great, because all the details have already been lost on you. There are some reasons for that, which we don't necessarily have to go into right now. But what I do have to share with you, and I'd like to share with you, are some concepts that the Arizona Attorney General and his staff intend to apply to evaluating any options that might be considered going forward. And I think it's important that everyone understands, at least from the Arizona perspective, these are some critical concepts that need to be considered. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight and express Attorney General Horn's thanks as well. The office is committed to the thought that those folks who are most impacted, those members of the community whose families, whose businesses, whose homes are impacted, should be heard from. And we encourage not only the participation that we have here tonight, but ongoing participation by contact with Attorney General Horn and his staff as the process moves forward. The first principle that the Arizona Attorney General would intend to apply here is that we are committed to ensuring that the rule of law established under the constitutions of the United States, the state of Arizona, and local law is respected and observed and enforced in Colorado City and its surrounding communities, just as it is throughout all other communities in our state. And that every citizen of this area, like all citizens throughout Arizona, will ultimately be able to share the same confidence that all elements, all resources of their government from top to bottom will be enforcing the laws fairly and equally and consistent with the laws as they're written. To that end, the Arizona Attorney General, as many of you know, has devoted and continues to devote, to devote, excuse me, substantial resources to addressing critical needs that the Arizona Attorney General has found to ensure new law enforcement and civil rights protection for all citizens in your communities. And irrespective of what happens with the UEP trust situation going forward, I think everyone can expect that that commitment will continue. The Arizona Attorney General is also committed to the position that any resolution of the UEP trust issues must recognize the existence of the reformed trust and legal proceedings that have occurred to this point. Must also recognize that any resolution, any option going forward must be structured so that it recognizes and honors and observes the rule of law regarding trusts, regarding their reformation, and regarding, if necessary, their termination and dissolution. Given all of that, the Arizona Attorney General believes that to keep the discussion moving forward, and he'd like to keep that discussion moving forward, but to keep it moving forward as quickly as possible toward an appropriate resolution requires all the participants to recognize that there are certain legal parameters that have to be observed, that ultimately, as has already been pointed out by David Sonaray, the court will have to approve any solution here. You can't simply walk in and wave a magic wand and say, "Judge, it's no longer, your issue is no longer a matter for the courts. It's before the courts now, and will need to be resolved ultimately by the courts." And all participants are going to have to recognize that ultimately, there are going to be legal tests and standards that have to be met by any solution. We also recognize, and one of the reasons that I'm not here with a particular presentation for you is, we recognize that there may be multiple alternative legally acceptable alternatives here. And that creativity is probably needed at this point to come up with as many feasible solutions as possible. And we certainly hope that part of the process is started right here, is that we can get the feedback and the ideas, and some of the perhaps creative thoughts that we're not capable of having or haven't had yet from all of you, because you certainly understand the dynamics on the ground far better than anybody else. And we would appreciate, again, as critical and as creative, a thought that you can possibly bring to this to give us options to consider. I think I've sort of adequately now summarized hopefully that the principles that the Arizona Attorney General's office will use to guide its evaluation of things. We certainly look forward to applying those principles in a way that we hope, and we believe, given our knowledge of the community here, will be constructive, will be cooperative, and will be as efficient and as quickly resolved as possible. So with that, I think I'll yield the floor, and I don't know if we have anyone else here to speak. Paul?
I'm going to invite some of the people who are going to ask some of the questions while they're coming up. Margaret?
I'm not contagious. No, no, doctor said that. Continue to continue.
Merrill?
I've got one. I better get one out.
Kristen Becker? While they're coming up, I'll read just a couple of comments we have here. One said, "One house for sale." Someone identified who wants to sell their house. That's on. The next question was, "When will this be over?" I'm not sure if they mean the meeting.
Yeah, the meeting?
The whole thing that we're talking about. So Margaret is on the advisory board. I'll turn the mic to photo for her.
Hi, I'm Margaret Cook, and I've been on the advisory board since the beginning of this, when estate came into play. I would like to say one thing, and that is I'm really, really, really in favor of minimizing the cost of what takes one trust. And my feelings are that lawsuits and complaints have really fueled the cost of what it's taken in one trust. And I really encourage everybody to come and talk to the board, to the Utah AG, the Arizona AG, or anyone that can give any answers, because we really deserve to minimize the cost of what it's taking in one trust. Because if you don't, then it just takes away from what we have to give out. And it's a big thing to me to see people not displaced from what they rightfully should have. So to me, that's a big thing. To get past these fees and costs that are so enormous.
I agree with Margaret, even though I don't live down here or have any land down here. But I'm concerned because I have so many loved ones and relatives. But that's hard one here. And a lot of the things that I've been hearing is, and a big concern is what's going to happen to the homes and the land while these decisions are made. I was wondering if there's anything in progress to protect the people and the land and the homes while these decisions, legal decisions are made, so that the people are not still being abused, and homes are not still being wrecked, and properties destroyed. That's huge right now. That's a big concern I'm hearing from a lot of people. I'm hoping that something can be put in place for that. And then another question I had is, and I'm sure you considered this, is what if more than one family wants the same household? They've been moved around, and they lay claim to those houses in their efforts that they have put there. So that's just a concern to be discussed in the future. I'm glad you're all here.
If you want to answer a question before...
Would you like me to?
Sure.
That's a very real concern in terms of people having competing claims. And that's why the distribution, you know, the trustees or committee or whatever you want to call them, we believe that every house here in the community has a history. And that with the combination of people that we anticipate, that that history will be known. And again, we have this formula that we go through in terms of the cost, but before it gets to the formula, there's a, there are nine principles of the reformed trust that need to be looked at by this group of people. And one of those is very subjective, but that's the way, that's the nature of this beast, and that's just wants and needs. And some individual may be living alone in a 20-bedroom house, and another individual with 20 members of the family is living in a three-bedroom house. And I would hope that that committee then would make appropriate adjustments for the just wants and needs. But, and I'm a very straightforward person, and I have to say that there's probably more demand than there is housing. And they're going to, there are going to be some people that don't end up with what they want. We're hopeful that the majority of the decisions are good, and the majority of the just wants and needs of the community are filled. But you ask a very, that's going to be the really difficult part for this committee, and I'm very grateful that, I don't think that I'm going to be involved in that. That's going to be, that's where the rubber hits the road.
If I may. Two things. First of all, to reem- First of all, to reemphasize that the Utah Attorney General doesn't yet have a position on any particular option. And we have not had the opportunity to review this plan that Mr. Wise, that you've discussed in the detail in which you've discussed it tonight. So I'm sure there's a lot of details that we'll want to look at and examine. And that said, the liquidation approach would work on more of a free-market basis, but presumably people who are more attached to a particular piece of property would want to use the credit that they have to purchase that property and would be more interested in seeing that happen. There is no perfect way, probably, to resolve all competing claims to property. I think we would all agree that that's not a possibility.
There won't be any perfect answer.
Right. So the question is the mechanism, and whether a board is a better approach, whether another market, a market mechanism is a better approach, whether there's a third better approach out there or a fourth better approach out there is one of the things we're trying to determine.
I want to address the first question on the card, which is, "When will this be over?" I don't know if this is working or not, but it's not working?
Well, sat. I mean, nobody heard what I said?
No. In fact, can I go up right there? A lot of people are having a hard time hearing, so if you could speak loudly to the mic to help everyone hear and also listen.
We'll have that one. Okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. I thought I would address the first question that was asked off the card, which is, "When will this be over?" And presuming you're not asking about this particular meeting, and you're asking about the trust proceeding itself, my answer would be, nobody can tell you exactly when it will be over. There obviously is a legal process involved, and a legal process requires that you have not only full briefing, an argument potentially to the court about any option that might exist, but it's going to require that there be notice given to appropriate interested parties, potentially. It's going to potentially involve, at some point, if there are dissenters, it will involve potentially some sort of appeal process. And I don't want to throw a bunch of cold water on things and make it sound like it's, you know, never-ending. But obviously, there is a legal process that has to be followed. And that would start with recommendations being made to the court, and that certainly hasn't happened yet. And I think what you're hearing tonight are some preliminary thoughts, but it may be sometime before the type of input that we're seeking here and that we'll be seeking in the coming weeks can be put together into more concrete proposals and then discussed among all the folks that have a stake before we can even come up with proposals that might be submitted to the court. So it's, unfortunately, it's not a process that can be resolved overnight, as nice as that would be. And part of it, I think I would also just add, part of that will depend upon the amount of cooperation there is within the interested stakeholder community. If there is a tremendous amount of dissent from various factions, groups, individuals, that will obviously cause any submission to the court to drag out, and perhaps cause the court process itself to drag out if folks then intervene and want to be heard in court. So that could make a big difference as well.
If I may. We've got to get rid of this. And that might help. Okay. So...
Are you about to speak, Dave?
I am.
Okay.
We're messing with these little mics here. Is that okay? Does that work for...
Yes.
Okay, great. Just to also emphasize that we are open to a wide variety of options. The intent originally in 2006 was that a formal board of trustees would take over the trust. And what we had today is an advisory board. And that option, at least in our minds, is still something that's on the table. It didn't happen for various reasons, some of them having to deal with legal challenges that were made, many of which have been resolved now. But we don't want to foreclose the possibility of the community coming together and actually putting together a board of trustees that could, in fact, take over the operation of the trust, in which case then we may need to distribute assets or liquidate or do anything else, which simply we need for them to run the trust. I do want to mention that's still on the table in our minds, at least as a possibility.
I'm Merrill Harper's wife. He's wondering if it is the intention of the Attorney General to get out of the way and let Judge Lindbergh proceed to give people their deeds. We hear many times that we're going to get our deeds. It looks like we're going to have our deeds, and then one delay after another happens. And so we're wondering how, if that's going to happen.
I'm here just answering my office. I don't believe that we have been in the way. There is, at the moment, no plan in front of the court, that I'm aware of, to distribute specific deeds to specific people. The special producer has not put such a plan in front of the court, or presented a formal plan to our office that has all the detail that was presented tonight. I think that what has caused delay in the resolution of this process overall for many years have been the numerous legal challenges at every level and in every forum by a wide variety of people. And that process, I am hopeful, is coming to some degree of conclusion with the resolution now and the determination that the 2006 trust is the instrument we're working from and the resolution of the case in federal court in front of the defense.
Let me just make one comment, too, that right now, and I'm not sure of the exact number, but I think it's approximately, the trust has approximately 27 lawsuits against it, basically. I mentioned the distribution of Hildale. Well, we'd love to start distributing property deeds in Hildale, but then we, what do we have? Well, that's right. We have an appeal at the Utah Supreme Court filed by Hildale City to oppose that. So we can't record the deed, we can't record the property, the subdivision, can't do that until that appeal is resolved. There are some issues with Harker Farm. Oh, yeah, we'd love to make some decisions there. Oh, that's right, we have two lawsuits there. I mean, everywhere we turn, in essence, I believe my attorneys have said that there's a Liz pendant, and I'm not, I'll let attorney, I'm a CPA, I'm not going to let, I'll let attorneys discuss that. My understanding is there's a Liz pendant on just about every piece of property in the community that has been filed by people opposing the trust. And so the major reason that things haven't progressed any faster is because, as David said, because of litigation. And the reason that we don't have a board of trustees and we have a board of advisors is because of the litigation and the requirements there for the constant ongoing legal consultation that's required. It's not administrated, it's legal. And so the attorneys are running 90% of the show, both pro and con. And hopefully, this 10th Circuit Court of Appeals decision will help resolve some of this litigation. And I believe that once the process of distribution starts, that there will be a groundswell of activity. But again, I mentioned Colorado City, officials in Colorado City oppose the subdivision process as, from the engineering standpoint, that's going to take some extra time, it's going to take some extra money. And so, you know, it's really out of our hands.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to welcome Attorney General Mark Schumpert, who's probably here. So I'd like to welcome him.
Well, while we're doing that, I'd like to invite Chad and or Charlotte Challow to come up and answer questions. And I believe it's Iris Dotson, if I'm close, you can know who you are, and then Katie Cox, if you'd like to come up next to ask questions. Mark, while they're coming up, do you want to say a few words?
Why, I take thousands of miles to be with you today. I apologize for keeping you waiting. Best late clients coming into Vegas and then trying to get up here on time, and I apologize for that after reading the floor of the morning. Very glad to be here. It's been since, I think, Paul, with the 2004, Terry Goddard and I were here for our first town hall meeting.
2003, and I want to inform you that this is our sixth-type gathering with the Arizona Attorney General's office.
Well, I saw former Attorney General Terry Goddard. I know, I was listening to this on the radio. Thank you for streaming that. It's all the way driving here, except through one part of the Virgin Gorge there, I didn't get it. But you mentioned that you were representing Terry for many years. Terry Goddard is, I saw him in Florida, and said to say hi. He appreciated the chance to be here early on when we came up to try to understand what's going on in the community. So many years later, I understand there was a question just now about who's standing in the way. Are you standing in the way, Attorney General? I mean, it's been nearly seven years since we felt it was important to exercise our legal duty to protect the beneficiaries of UEP trust. At that time, it was a religious charitable trust. The beneficiaries were all the members of the FLDs church. Of course, that was reformed by the judge, and that's the, I understand it to be explained, that's what's in place today. The beneficiaries, therefore, are those of you who call yourself LDS and follow or believe in Warren Jeffs as your president of your church, those who are FLDs, consider yourself LDS, but do not follow Warren Jeffs, do not believe he's a leader, and it is those who are non-FDS, and it is those of you who are former FLDs. I think that should cover about everybody here in this room tonight.
You're meaning FLDs, correct?
With what?
FLDs?
Yes. I'm saying FLDs. And so, obviously, under the Reform Trust, you all have an opportunity to have an interest in property, personal access to community property within this community. And it was, I've been saying now for many years, this was never intended to last this many years. Special Producer Bruce Wise was to come in and secure the property, do an accounting, which he did, and then ultimately turn this over to a board of trustees. I know there's a PowerPoint on that. I listened to David from my office. I really appreciate him stepping up in my absence and doing that presentation. I have about five weeks left in office. Something I started when I first came into office almost 12 years ago, looking after what I believed to be victims or those who may have been victimized down here in this community, those who were needed, felt I would like to see this well on its way before I leave office. That's why we're here tonight. We are very grateful that finally a federal stay will be lifted, that we have a decision in that case, so that Judge Lindbergh can once again move forward and Bruce Wise can move forward with his attorneys and hopefully be able to resolve this issue. The fastest way to get this done, I know David presented four potential options, obviously the fastest way to get it done is to all of us get together and resolve this through some type of mediation, settlement agreement, compromise, everybody giving something, everybody may be giving something up. By the way, of those four groups I mentioned, who are all interested and beneficiaries under the Reform Trust, I think every one of you dislike me, to one extent or another. And I think that means that I've probably been doing a pretty good job, the fact that you all find something that you don't like about me and the way we've done things. So with that, we're here tonight to hear from you. I apologize for not being here sooner, but look forward to your questions now. So Paul, what was the first question again?
She's coming up to ask you.
And your name again?
My name's Charlotte Challow. I represent Marvin Wyeth family, so. Anyway, I'm just asking a question. What about the people who are in their own original homes, and they have paid all the taxes pretty much on time, and the $100 a month fee to the people? Is there houses, is our houses safe from the recent breakups or being charged a super amount of money?
Well, of course, that depends on what the ultimate plan is. And I know we went through two possible dissolutions of the trust property. I would believe that all of us are unified in belief that those of you who have that premier right or claim to that property, who have been meeting the obligations the court's put in place and the special producer's put in place all these years, that you certainly would have the number-one right to that property. I don't know if any of you would differ from that.
No, I don't think so. Again, depending upon which plan is chosen, but if our plan were chosen, certainly the distribution of trustees or committee or whatever you want to call it would be taking that into account, Charlotte. So I would think that there would be some costs, at least the purchase of the, the payment of the closing cost, the purchase of the ground, the $5,000, you know, subdivision fee across, whatever you want to call it, but very minimal, very minimal. And one of the aspects of our plan is, we realize the community has been financially decimated, and that we would want then to have a term, a timeframe in order to pay those costs. So if, for example, it turned out very possibly that your, the home that you're talking about from Marvin is maybe $6,000 or $6,500, and even that is not something that you had in your biggie bank, but over a two-year period could accumulate, then the trust, our plan that we're proposing would try and accommodate that.
I would think that no matter, really, whatever plan, whether it's just to have now the court appoint a board of trustees that will make those decisions, or whether we perceive with some type of interest, I know there'll be, or perhaps an enhanced housing committee, housing board, that is made up of representatives of all those in the community, so everybody feels like they're being treated fairly, and those issues and your claim to property will be considered by that group. I would hope that in whatever resolution we have, that somebody else has, Charlotte, a claim or wants to make a claim to your residence, and yet, and they come in and say that they put equity in or sweat equity or done something, let's not say they make a claim to it, but the board or the trustees or the housing committee or whoever it is makes the determination that you were entitled to that place, then there should be some opportunity for some other house or property within the community for that person to be able to somehow apply for, again, back to either the court or the housing committee or the board of trustees, depending how this thing kind of falls out. So that everybody treats them.
I agree with that comment. And that's part of our plan, that if you don't get the house that you're vying for initially, then Plan B.
My question, and while you're talking about the advisory board and board of trustees, I don't know if Bruce mentioned that in our plan, there would be additional members from the community brought on to assist the existing housing committee, housing committee, so that there would be a wider spectrum of votes to determine the distribution. Okay, so we went through this prior point quite fast, and I have a question about the Attorney General's proposal of putting the houses up for auction. Could anyone come in and bid on the houses, or would it be only beneficiaries? Because it's my belief that this place belongs to the beneficiaries of the trust, the people who were born here, raised here, and put, they're all in this place. That's my question.
Well, first, I want to reiterate, and I know David did this early on, that there is no plan right now. These are proposals, recommendations. We think that, these are things that we thought of. If you have a better idea, anybody in this room tonight has a better idea how to resolve this, we're here to listen. That's why we also have the contact information up here, so if you don't want to be heard tonight, or after you go back and talk to your friends and family, if you come up with some other ideas on how to resolve this, then we want to hear from you. So again, it's not our plan to do this, but I certainly would, you know, we will, obviously, and David pointed it out very first, whatever we do going forward will be done according to the Reform Trust and the definition of who the beneficiaries are under that Reform Trust. Now, again, the only thing that may change that is, we negotiate something different, remembering that it must be approved by the court, by Judge Lindbergh. If we got away from the Reform Trust and her interpretation of meaning in reforming the trust in that way, I think we would have some difficulty probably getting an agreement approved unless, of course, all the parties agree and then the judge ultimately could visit us in the best interest of all of the ownership.
So far, the rest of my questions don't have a person attached to them, and so I will start reading them. The first question is, will descendants and contributors have claim on property or land that is being donated?
Will the what?
Will descendants...
Oh, descendants?
Descendants, like old, of contributors have a claim on property and land donated?
I refuse to answer on the grounds that we haven't considered that. I refuse to answer on the grounds that we haven't considered that. That's not part of our plan, and again, I think the committee or the board that makes that decision will have to do so on a case-by-case basis. And I think that there are situations where it's probably very appropriate, and I think that there are probably situations where it's inappropriate. And I think that those community members that are on that board would hopefully make wise decisions with regard to that. So, I don't, I don't open it up to descendants, I don't close it to descendants. I think it's case by case.
I would hope that would be the case. When you look at, you'll have a number of lawyers involved, look at property law. Often, you know, for hundreds of years of property law, you've been able to pass it on to your descendants. This is a very unique situation, obviously, so I would agree with Bruce Weisen, Special judiciary, that I think those should and would be considered by a committee or a Board of Trustees in the future, I guess, again, they'll guarantee this point.
Okay, we've had several people ask this question, and I'm not sure if any of you can answer, but I'll ask it. Do you know why the CMC store is closed?
Yeah, the real answer is no, there's conjecture. I was actually down to St. George at an association meeting and somebody called me and told me that it was closed, and then somebody else called me and said, yeah, the word out is that Bruce Weisen had it closed and was responsible for closing it. And then the next day, I heard it was Willie Jessup was involved, was the cause for it being closed. And I think the correct answer is C, none of the above, that it's probably an internal decision. The organization that apparently is, is, his name is up on the storefront, has actually been around for some time, and my understanding is that it's the entity that is used to purchase goods for the Bishop's Storehouse. So it may be that that CMC store is now going to become a part of the Bishop's Storehouse or something, but yeah, Bill Richard said it, the answer is no, but now you've heard all my conjecture.
Okay, I have one question here. What will happen to those who lack the money to buy their lands or homes yet they have contributed over the years to the trust? I think we talked a little bit about that in the PowerPoint, but can you address that a little bit further?
Yeah, let me just see how, and we've been talking about this for years. We examined this very closely. Wow, 2008 or 2009, we were together in settlement discussions. There were representatives there from the FLDs church, active followers of Warren Jeffs at the time, and back to first and second counselors and the bishop. We're all in meetings with this. We talked about these issues, and in the room, there were those who were advisory board, well, not necessarily in the room, but Bruce Weisen was in the room. We came in and out of these negotiations, and we all talked about that the need to be fair to people here. But there are going to be, over all this time, there's going to be multiple claims sometimes in the same property, it's just going to happen. And somebody is going to prevail, in fairness, someone's going to have to prevail. But that doesn't mean, see you later, so sad, too bad, go to St. George and try and find something. It's where we want, if you want to live here, if you've had an interest, if you've put sweat equity, if you've pounded nails, if you donated property, if you, whatever you've done, and though you donated with that specific property that you worked on and gave your heart and soul to, then there should be another property somewhere within the community if you want to stay here. It's a beautiful place, and with regard to places closing, we, this is a beautiful place to live. There's great opportunities, there'd be great businesses here. We would love to see it thrive, and we'd love to see them open and people coming back and getting along as neighbors despite your differences in your religious beliefs and so forth, but we'd love to see that happen. We know that we have to resolve these issues that have been locked up so long in the courts, and it's because of litigation that's been involved and federal states and everything else that have delayed this. Now it's time to move on.
I think the question highlights a little bit one of the earlier comments that we all made, which is that any solution is going to have to work within the parameters of the trust reformation in some way to meet the legal standards that everyone has to meet to resolve it. Within that, this is an issue, because the Reform Trust does not necessarily establish any criteria for participation as a beneficiary, that you have to have a particular amount of money, that you have to be healed in a certain way, that you have to be able to afford your benefits. That, those are the concepts, at least in my opinion, are foreign to the trust right now, meaning any solution is going to have to take account of the fact that those are not requirements right now in the trust. That probably doesn't provide a nice detailed answer to the question, but I think it at least points out the fact that when we look at those issues, we look at the question, does everyone have to actually buy their property? What happens when someone does have legitimate claims and participate under the Reform Trust, but they simply don't have money to put into a particular piece of property? Are they still eligible to participate under some sort of a distribution? Again, we have to go back at some point to the purposes, objectives, and the standards under that Reform Trust and make sure that any distribution plan is going to adequately reflect those objectives. And right now, those objectives don't include those kinds of criteria.
Okay, this question came to us online, says, am I correctly assuming that the decisions on the UEP trust will be made to benefit all beneficiaries, no matter where they currently live, and will cover all UEP properties, no matter where they are located? Do the fiduciary and judge based in Utah have authority to make decisions about property located in Canada? And good question, because Wilson Blackmore is struggling to see the audience, so maybe you want to pipe in on that one as well.
A lot of questions. Well, right now, the, there's a Utah judge sitting in judgment, so to speak, on this property, and much of it, most of it is in Arizona. And so, we've always, I've always had the belief that UEP property, wherever it's situated, frankly, in whatever country or whatever state it's in, if it was purchased with, initially with UEP assets, if UEP assets were taken and used to buy YMZ Ranch, for example, under some other name and through some other bank account, but they were, it was money that came from the people in this community who lived here for 50, 60, 70, whatever, 800 years, then that's included. Now, Texas might have something to say about that, as far as YMZ and whether that's going to be something that's part of the trust or not, but as far as Canada, I mean, obviously, you start crossing country borders, the state officials don't have a whole lot to say about that. But we do have contacts and have met several times with authorities in Canada over the years, and other places, and in Mexico, frankly, if there's any UEP property down there. Would you feel any differently about?
No, and my understanding, and I've met with Canadian authorities as well, that they recognize the jurisdiction of the Utah court. Whether you agree with that or not, that seems to be the case. And so, yes, a Utah judge is making decisions that affect Canadians. The parameters of her decision-making, however, are contained within the box of Canadian law, and those laws are significantly different than the laws that we're used to here. So, that's why I mentioned in my comments that although we're trying to be as similar as possible, there are extreme differences in the laws. But yeah, and to answer your question about the far-flung beneficiaries, again, it's kind of like the descendants. I think that some of those would be appropriate, and I think some of those would not be appropriate. And again, remember, we need to look at the nine requirements of a beneficiary of the Reform Trust, and it was a charitable, it is a charitable trust, and one thing that we tend to lose sight of is that it is a trust, a charitable trust, it's not a credit union. Somebody can't come in and, Tom can't come in and say, well gee, I gave $53,234 to the trust. Where's my, where's my check? You know, where's my value? It's not going to quite work like that. The equitability and fairness and all of that are going to be taken into account, contributions are going to be taken into account, but it is not a credit union either. So, I think most of these questions seem to resolve, revolve around, you know, what am I going to get? And most of our answers are going to be, we don't know exactly, but we hope that the decisions made are equitable and fair. And I think that would answer most of the questions.
It's really bright. Whitstone, where are you? Do you want to, do you want to say whether you believe your property up there is subject to UEP in a Utah court?
It's a part of the UEP.
Go answer, yes.
It's a part of the UEP. And so it's litigated, the decision of the tribe is litigated in Canada that they just recognized being a thief of the ownership of property. So, this is the.
Okay.
The only point I would add to Bruce's comments were, sort of going back to my prior comments, yet again, when you look at the existing trust, when you look at, as Bruce pointed out, the multiple factors that are considered for participant beneficiary status, one of those is not, you must be currently residing on trust property. And again, any solution that, or any alternative or distribution plan that comes out of this, I think is going to have to consider that fact. If someone were to raise a suggestion and say, you know what, we should really limit this to only people who are currently residing on trust property, you create a conflict with the existing Reform Trust, and we should have great problems and perhaps problems that are insurmountable getting that through the court's approval.
Okay, what happens if residents choose not to participate? What if they do nothing?
Then you get nothing, I guess. I mean, this is a free country still, and you have a right to participate and not participate, I would think.
Well, as I mentioned briefly in my remarks, there are some people in the community, some members of the community that are not able to participate, whether they want to or not. And we, we believe that their rights and benefits should be guarded as well. So, again, heavy burden on this committee that we talked about, it would be anticipated and certainly desired and even mandated that they take those non-participants into account for a period of time. Now, there has to be a cutoff period, and I mentioned, is that two years or three years or possibly five years? I don't know, that's a detail that would need to be worked out, but it would seem like at some point in time, and I'm surrounded by attorneys, attorneys here, that they would say, well, there has to be a point in time where you cut it off. And then if they, if people refuse to participate after a lengthy period of time, then so be it, as Mark said, they don't participate, they don't get anything. But there needs to be, there needs to be a period of time for those that are unable to participate right now for their protection.
I guess one of my worries is getting back into the beliefs of all of us. Mark said it's a free country, but part of the, with that freedom comes legal concepts that we call waiver, and that if folks sit on their rights and they don't exercise them, sometimes it can be easily foreclosed from ever exercising their rights again by the law, and certainly that's a concept that we're trying to adhere to those who don't elect to participate in the process.
And in fact, that's exactly what happened with the, at the FLDs, in that they weren't participating, answered them nothing initially, which led to the court action and the appointment of Special judiciary, and then they decided they, they meaning, I guess, Warren Jeffs and other leaders to get involved in litigation and to challenge the Reform Trust, but by then it was too late, that's because there are laws in place to time this and those challenges, and that's ultimately what our Supreme Court and the intent circuit has ruled. Now, that, again, I think what the question has to do with your, perhaps residential properties, business properties, but there are also those community properties you may choose not to participate, to have a home or your business here, but you may still want to live in the area and have access to some of those communal properties we've talked about over the years, a park, et cetera, or where you want to bury your loved ones and so forth. I think there, you would still, you know, would still hopefully have an interest in the entire community and ability to access that, and that's going to be, something's going to have to be discussed and resolved as well, either by agreement or by the court.
Okay, I have a couple of questions that actually talk about this meeting here. A lot of people were concerned about the notice given about the meeting. In this one, it said that followers of Warren Jeffs have no ability to get TV, newspapers, texts, very limited conversations. The trust says it's a $100 fee. Was there a notice to this meeting or postings? They do share about 85% of the interest, and maybe I will start about what I have done to help get the notice out. All of the people that are participating in the meeting, anybody who's been involved with the trust, I've asked them to send and notify the people about meeting. We have put out a press release, so the media was reporting about it. I've also asked, employed the advocates to send notices to their email list, lists that I don't have access to. And so, we did every effort to get the word out, but I'm guessing that there are a lot of people who did not know about this meeting. So this is the start of the discussion. We're hoping that after this meeting, that maybe some of you can talk to your friends and neighbors and let them know that they still can have a voice and still can participate. If you guys would like to add to that, please do.
Everybody knows about this meeting tonight. Lyle, Jeff knows about this meeting tonight, and so, so do those who follow him, consider him a bishop, as they were told. You know what, we absolutely have to rely on everybody in this room. You have family, you have friends, you have coworkers, you have associates, you have people you made, who you know, who are in that group, the FLDs, because they're themselves followers of Warren Jeffs and Lyle. We need you to tell them the truth about Warren Jeffs. They, you know, they, they don't get the news, but they have to understand that he's a convicted child rapist, he's never coming out of prison. His actions, and by the way, those active, strongest supporters of Warren Jeffs, people who got in my face, face-to-face, toe-toe, many a time, who once saw the evidence themselves from the Escala, not manufactured, not from the vault in Texas, from Warren Jeffs' possession directly, who once they saw the evidence, knew what kind of person he was. And you have to, you just have to please convince the people here who he is, so they can, you know, get some better decision-making. I can't, I'm an elected official, I'm a government official, I can't tell anybody who to believe in. That would be wrong, that would be contrary to the First Amendment. I'm telling you to believe in. And after, if this is, if property is given back and you actually have title to your property and you decide you want to give that to an FLDs church led by Warren Jeffs, I can't stop you. It can't be used to further criminal conduct, but I can't tell you who to believe in. But you, you have, people should have in this country informed consent and informed belief and they need to know, so they can make those choices. And you have to do that. You have to, we rely on you.
There are undoubtedly many families in the community who are barely surviving financially in their current situation, where they don't have a mortgage or a monthly payment. If the seizure of the YMZ Ranch in Texas causes a large migration back to Short Creek, is there enough housing in the trust for the trust beneficiaries returning who want to live here?
Well, Mark gave me the microphones and I don't know, and I'm going to, I'm going to give it to Bill and I'm going to say, I don't know. But, he'll give it right back. We don't know the answer to that question. We believe that there is a lot of, some of the people that I have working down here for me, we believe that there are a lot of houses, a lot of housing that is underutilized, that certain people are sort of seizing property, if you will, playing musical chairs with houses and waiting for the music to stop and trying to accumulate as many chairs or houses as they can in a particular group or whatever. And so, yeah, I think that there's more utilization available than is being used, but I certainly don't know the answer to that question. I've been asking people in the community, that they've seen people coming back from Texas, if there are Texas license plates and so and such forth, and I haven't, I haven't heard any positive response. heard any positive responses, so I'm, I'm, I'm not anticipating that people from Texas will be coming back in mass rows. I was concerned about it, um, but I, but nobody's reported anything to me, and so, uh, they're, they're either going to houses and hiding or rent pre-bill or rent post or someplace, but I'm, uh, I'm not seeing any, uh, any problem here for the time being.
Okay. Um, two, two questions relating to Bruce Weisen. One, well, actually relating to you, Mark Sherwood as well. Uh, they want to know if you can do something to lower Bruce's fees. And the second part is, is if the state of Utah has been ordered to pay those fees, will the beneficiaries still end up having to pay for those fees anyways?
Well, the, the fees of the fiduciary are primarily the fees of the litigation support from the attorneys of, uh, five point seven million that was put in, uh, about, um, seventy percent of it was for legal fees. Some of it is for the engineering firm and some of it is for my fees. Uh, I'm probably responsible for fifteen to twenty percent of the fee of our firm. Um, but most of the litigation, I told you, there are probably twenty-seven cases that are, that are pending right now and, and, uh, those have not been, a few of them have been filed by us to protect rights, et cetera, but most of it's been filed against us. And we already even know what, what the response is. If we answer them nothing, we lose, and so we can't answer nothing and we've got to defend, and that takes time and money and resource, and that's where those fees have gone. Um, so they answered your question proactively going forward. Any way to reduce the fees? Yeah, stop the, stop the litigation and, uh, the massive amount of fees will go away and it will be a relatively minor administrative process. Uh, in terms of the, uh, the beneficiaries paying, uh, for the, the past fees, I ought to give this to Mark, but, uh, I guess my comment is, uh, the judge and, and, uh, David in his comments briefly before, of all stated, that the, those, those expenses, uh, the liabilities of the trust have to be paid, um, beneficiaries aren't gonna pay that directly, say, but I envision sales of property and so on and so forth, uh, reimbursement of the, of the, uh, engineering fees and subdivision fees at the engineering firm. And so indirectly, I think the community would end up paying some. Um, and certainly the hundred dollar a month occupancy fee, that's supposed to cover, uh, ongoing administrative will. Most of the people here tonight, who are subject to the occupancy fee, are not paying it, and so that just increases the amount of debt. Um, I'm not sure if that totally answers your question, but, uh, to some degree, the beneficiaries will pay, uh, either, either through sale of property of the community going through occupancy fees and some things like that.
When the, uh, when the special fiduciary was appointed, it was all understood that he and his attorneys and any cost would be paid out of their trust, funds of the trust. At that time, I wasn't completely sure what they were within, there's a lot of property, uh, but at this point, it's understood that there's not a bunch of cash sitting around to pay those fees. It's just not there. Uh, occupancy fees, please pay them if you have them, uh, but property will have to be sold to pay that. Now, I think, so David, did you mention the, the court order that I paid those?
Did I mention the court order?
Yeah? Did you say?
I know we didn't discuss it in great detail, but we, yeah.
Okay. Well, the court ordered that I pay five point six million dollars if it's going on. Well, I don't, I don't have five point six million dollars. Actually, she ordered it in my official passes, Attorney General, which is an order against the state of Utah, the state of Utah pay that, which means the taxpayer, the state of Utah, pay that. Uh, she has agreed that the purpose of this, uh, it was always understood that fiduciary costs, expenses, fees, attorney's fees, if you pay it out of the trust, therefore, if this taxpayer do step up and do that through their legislature, uh, then it will be as, recognized as a loan, there'll be, uh, repayment once property is sold or some other way to generate five point six, five point seven, whatever six, whatever it gets up to. So, uh, but where, where that's at right now is, uh, the court, the judge had me come to court, put me on parole, put me on the witness stand, and maybe had me answer questions. Uh, I don't have in my Attorney General budget five point six million sitting there that, that I could write a check for. Uh, the, the, the way this works is, it's a, it's a judgment against the state of Utah, which needs to be appropriated by the state legislature, everyone's who do that. I made a budget request for that money to the legislature. I made a budget request to the governor, who's putting together his budget. Hopefully he'll include that in his budget. But then the legislature takes his budget and sometimes they say they just put it in a round file and they start over, but they consider clearly what's in his budget and, uh, that session will start in January and usually the budgets are finalized at near the end of the session in March. Uh, we've indicated that, uh, doesn't appear that that money will be available until it's appropriated. If it's done as what we call a supplemental to last year's state budget, it can be made available as early as, we think, April, May, maybe May. If it's done as part of this current fiscal year budget, uh, the, the one that's coming up, it's called the 2014 budget, then it won't be available to be paid until July. A lot of work needs to be done before then. The attorneys for Mr. Weisen have said they can't, they have been paid in years, they, they owe a lot of money, they can't do anything else. If there's any lawyers out there that want to act pro bono and help us out so we can move forward with one of these options or a mix of these options, we, we need to move forward with that and, and not wait until July when that money could be ultimately appropriated, if it is appropriated. It's not in my hands, it's in the hands of the legislature.
Yeah, I have, uh, two questions that kind of relate to the unique, uh, nature of the community, but, um, we're, we're kind of winding down in time, even though it's starting a little bit late, but, uh, I've, I've talked to a couple of people here in the audience and asked if they wanted to make a comment or to say something, or if there's, or if there are a few other people who really feel like there is a question that has not been answered here that they came here to answer. What we'll do on the cabinet, maybe if you want to just come forward a line behind me while I'm, um, hopefully a small line.
Paul? Yes? Were we gonna have, uh, Mr. Hool or somebody that the...
One of, one of his representatives I've been invited to come up and speak, and somebody that he would like to come, we would like to have him, or, or Mr. Hool would like to come up and speak. I'd be glad to hear from them. Um, so think about it, and let, let me just read, there's two questions that, that kind of talk about the nature of the community. What, what if a person living in a twenty-bedroom house, built it, contributed heavily, heavily to the trust, and has lost his family temporarily, are they going to lose their home? The second question is, what happens to a mother left in her home when the husband is kicked out to repent? The other wife is repenting too, so the single mother with children, but, uh, so you have a single mother with children, but since the female is not the one who, uh, hung the walls and raised, what's that?
Hammered the nails, right?
Hammered the nails, thank you. Uh, hammered the nails and raised her family there. As written, those who have accrued have rights, not the women. So there's some very unique things here, and I'm wondering, how, how are you going to resolve some of those?
Well, that, that's why I'm so absolutely critical that, uh, the Housing Board Committee or the Board of Trustees, that that's the way we go, that it's made up of people who, who understand these questions, who have experienced it, who know what's going on, who have themselves experienced it yourself, they see many people mudding, or you know people who have, so that it's your decision recommendation. Now, ultimately, it does have to be approved in the legal process, but if, if the board goes through it, it's made up of people who understand and you struggle with these decisions and, and the only requirement is that you just be fair as best you can. That's all, that's all that would be asked of whoever serves on, on those committees or boards, and, uh, don't, don't you think that's the way you resolve those questions?
Fair, fair and equitable. That's what it's got to be, and, and, uh, you know, that, that situation would deserve special consideration. Uh, is, is, uh, we went through as our board and looking at the situation and devising the, you know, model or whatever you wanna call it. Uh, we felt that about a third of the houses were kind of, uh, no brainers, slam dunks. And, and then a third of them would present some, some problems, and then a third of them would just be hellish. And, uh, you know, that's, 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 that's what they're, that's what they're gonna be doing. And, and a, a, a situation like that was just described, it, it has to be addressed, and, and my only answer is, again, I, uh, this group, this chosen group is gonna have to be fair and equitable, and I, I would want that they, they take into account that special situation and the, and the needs of the, of the women and children in that, in that particular situation.
Does you have something to add, or would we have Jeff Shields who's prepared to answer?
Go ahead, let Jeff answer.
Want to come up here? Come up here in the lights. So I get to... Thanks.
My name is Jeff Shields. I'm counsel for Bruce Weisen Fiduciary. I appeared a couple of these public meetings years ago. You may recall on earlier meetings, we talked about the spent roof trust option. We, we carefully thought about the concept of only the man in the household giving the deed, and that wouldn't be fair, particularly if there's many women and older children who helped burden on the houses and made the contribution to the trust. So one of the options that the reformed trust allows, and I think is still available, if it meets the fact situation, is to give the deed to a spent roof trust. It could have multiple beneficiaries. This helps answer that earlier question about descendants, because the descendants of a certain family could be the beneficiaries of the spent roof trust. Wouldn't be the UEP trust, would be another trust. The only asset could be the home or, or a series of homes, barns, fortunes, that kind of stuff that could go to a family. Maybe, maybe the oldest parents alive is the trustees of that trust, and then all the descendants of those people being the beneficiaries of that spent roof trust. So that is an option. I don't know if it fits every, it doesn't fit all situations. You'll recall, one of the other reasons we put in the spent roof trust option is because some of the people who deserve property, who probably qualify, may have taxes or may have judgment leads or other, other ways, basis where it would be, uh, business-wise not proven, but the deed in their name, if you put it in this trust name, I think insulated and credited, still have the beneficial use of that through their lifetime, with a lifetime of descendants. That's just a partial answer.
That, that would answer the, uh, the question about future descendants as well if they were in that particular trust. And, uh, I have to comment that, uh, nothing that I ever say, uh, doesn't get added on or corrected by my attorneys. Said, said, said lovingly, uh, go ahead.
He'll charge you later.
His unpaid attorney for four and a half years now.
Roger Hool represents some of the community members who are invited to come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Paul. Um, I don't, I don't work for any of the Attorney Generals, I don't work for, uh, Bruce Weisen, I work for former members of the FLDS community and have for many years. Um, in terms of how property will be distributed, the, the trust provides that it goes to satisfy just wants and needs. So the single mom with kids is gonna be high on that list. Uh, my clients want to make sure that the property goes back to the people. That's always been their objective. We've been involved in this since the beginning. Um, I, I just want to emphasize, I think this crowd already knows this and understands it. This is a, but the FLDS who are not here won't. And if you can tell them, I completely agree with the Attorney General, if you can tell them, if you can get the message out, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. This is your chance to get your home, to get your deed. You don't have to change your beliefs to do that, but this is a chance. And don't jump from the frying pan, you know, fire. Hold on to your property. You know, welcome to America. The other thing I, I would like to say, and I, I hope some FLDS people are listening and that they understand that this is so important, there needs to be an opportunity for people to understand the facts and make an informed decision. If they want to give their property away to someone who's leaving, after that, it's their business. I completely agree with Mark Sherwood. But the process needs to, needs to include a way to inform people of basic undisputed facts so they can make wise decisions. Uh, finally, uh, some of you may wonder, and I know there are rumors going around that, you know, I made this to, to get money out of the trust. I want you to know that I have never received any money from the trust. I've never been paid by the trust. I have no claim on any attorney fees that are gonna be paid from the trust. Uh, for eight years, I've worked, um, on a next year of pro bono, that means I don't get paid. I'm one better than Jeff Shields. He hasn't been paid for forty years, but he will get paid. I haven't been paid for forty years and I'll never get paid. Uh, but I, I've done this because our funding originally was covered by, by a charity, the Diversity Foundation. That ended in two thousand eight. But we're committed, we're still involved, we're still representing our clients, we're still in the hunt to make sure that the trust property goes back to the people. And please consider that. Please don't lose that opportunity and help everybody that's involved know what their rights are. Thank you.
Okay. We still have a number of questions. I've checked with, uh, the school and, uh, they said we could stay longer if we want to. Uh, sometimes it's the meeting, after the meeting, that's more important and you may wanna talk to people directly. Um, some of the questions we could post on our website and, and so we're, we're gonna probably have to devise a plan where we can post some of the questions rehearsed, I try to give you the best answers and to, uh, to continue this discussion so that we can give you the best answers as possible. Uh, just by coming in and to get your input, like, uh, it's Jeff Shields. The reason we're here is to have that discussion, and that is, uh, Roger Hool just said, we really want to hear what you would like to see done, because it's your property, these are your homes, this is your community, and you know better what should be done about it. And so by raising, raising hands, would you like to go till eight thirty, or would you like to say good night? Uh, by reason, who'd like to say a little bit longer? Boy, another convincing majority. How, who would like to, to call it a good night? Uh, I need a referee here. Someone step in from the basketball team.
How about we just, you know, we understand that you have families and kids and at home, uh, if you need to leave, we won't be offended. I won't be offended if you get up and have to leave. Uh, I was late getting here, I do sincerely apologize, I wanna hear from you. Like, I wanna take a vote on these four options.
I'm sure you might, right?
No, listen, we, uh, it'd be nice for me to know. I mean, it's, it's non-binding, it doesn't really mean anything, we don't know if all those four groups are represented here tonight, but there, I'm sure there's FLDS, former FLDS and non-FLDS, and those of you who consider yourself FLDS, but I mean, I, you know, I mean, they're, you're all here. We can turn off the camera. I'd kinda like to know, if you don't mind, and again, I'm not gonna hold it to you and I'm not gonna be, you know, making notes of who's voting, but if we ran through these four options, what, what is appealing to you? Let me just run them to you one more time. Yes, sir.
May I speak?
Yeah, come, come over here, sir.
Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. As you can see, I'm one of those who is an outsider and always being out of town. My ancestry is Native American, and, uh, we know all about losing land. And one of the things, without exception, the reason that we lost land is because we were divided amongst ourselves. Instead of working together, we divided. We fought against one another over stupid differences. Yeah, it was the Revolutionary War that broke the very law of peace in my tribe, but we could've said no. We could've followed the path, looking forward seven generations beyond our lifetime, beyond our lifetime, seven generations ahead. That's what is facing all of you in this time. And I'm just saying, drop the differences. We're all the creator's children. Let's act like children. They don't care who they play with. They simply fold their arms out to one another. That's where you're at in this moment. I've watched the community, many, many, many good people, and there are those who have hearts that are, uh, divided. And there are those who have hearts that are divided. It's time to end that, or you still can. Don't follow the path we did. They're not making any more of you. And that's what you have, a landless people, it's a powerless people. Thank you.
If the only majority here looking gets the applause. If the UEP was a charitable trust, I think we'll go a few more minutes, and then we'll call it a night. If UEP was a charitable trust as it was designed, why, what is the reason for the $100 a month fee?
I can answer that. To pay for the administration of that trust right now. In years past, there were people administrated through the offices of the church and other situations. Large sums of money were contributed. None of that is happening here now. And the $100 a month fee is necessary for the administration.
Okay, I'm going to ask two more questions. Has any consideration been made to the lifetime beneficiaries of the court case in the United States?
Well, when we talked about it in our situation, certainly they have a, like a super equitable situation. They would... that certainly has to be taken into account. And legally, as Bill Richards would say, that that probably would not be overcome until that individual's death. And even then, I'm sure there are very good reasons for that to continue. So I think that those would have to stay in place for the time being, and I wouldn't see any reason in the future why that would change either.
All right, I'm not going to let you off the hook. So here are the four options. I'm going to go through them once, and just kind of just have your interest on, okay? One, the first option would be that you continue with the current reformed trust, but with a new board of trustees. That's number one. Number two is to dissolve the trust and distribute the assets in a way that, the method that was kind of set forth in my dis by David and others. The third was dissolve the trust and liquidate the assets. Sell them all, and then people through this credit or point system get something back. Or four, everybody together and negotiate, mediate, resolve this through combined effort of negotiation. So, can I just see what you, of all those, what you would think would be the best? Number one, nominate a board of trustees and continue with the current trust. And two, dissolve the trust and distribute the assets. I've got two more here, two more there for you. Option three, dissolve the trust and liquidate the assets. Four, negotiate a new settlement, deviation amongst the various parties of interest. We try and... all right, thank you, that helps.
We have two more people who are going to ask questions, and then we're going to call it a night.
Sorry, I know our policy is for this to be, I'll let it be a draft, but somebody made a point. We live in our communities, and that's not the case. Because we're at the whims of the elected community of Hilldale, Ohio City, who we know are not doing a special thing to this community. We're at the whims of Warren Jeffs, Hugh, Elsal, Steve, or Hugh. I hate that option of dissolving communities, but I would like to know what you would like to do instead of that, because we don't live in our community.
I've been in discussion for years with the Department of Justice. I understood and worked with them and talked to the head of the Civil Rights Committee, who's a friend of mine, Tom Perez. Not Committee, Civil Rights Division, Department of Justice, Tom Perez, about the lawsuit they filed, civil rights action against the city and law enforcement. They are very active. I'm going to report back to him what happened tonight. If there is some kind of effort to negotiate a settlement, despite the fact, nobody wants to seem to think that's possible, but if that were something we were trying to do, the federal government, DOJ has said they clearly want to be a part of that as well, because they continue to be concerned about some of the issues this gentleman just raised. There is that one big unanswered question, you know, as far as, you know, we cannot... We just simply do not have the authority. Courts and the government does not have the authority, nor should we under our constitution, to come in and tell people that you have to believe a certain way or not a certain way. There are certain crimes, yes, that we can prosecute. We've said in this state that we don't have the resources to prosecute thousands of polygamists. We just don't. We don't have the jail space for them. We can't, you know, Texas couldn't handle 400 kids, and we're supposed to take thousands of kids with the custom? It cannot be done. And so that's when we use something called prosecutorial discretion. We have discretion to use our limited resources in a way to best protect those who are most vulnerable. In that case, we decided that was children. That's why beginning 2002, even though county officials at that time had elected, and many officials for 50-plus years had elected not to investigate or prosecute crimes against children in this community and others, we started with convicting Rodney Hall for marrying an underage girl and having sexual relations with her. And we continued on down that line, and Warren Jeffs took off from here with others. And I'm very pleased with my Texas counterparts who took action and properly presented the facts to a jury, and Warren Jeffs will never walk out of prison selling. So, yeah, we are not your enemies. I think, you have to understand, government, Attorney General's office, none of us, we are not your enemies. We're not anybody's enemy in here. I had the opportunity, I know it was criticized, for going into the homes of active FLDS who were followers of Warren Jeffs some years ago, when we were trying to resolve this, trying to get a feeling of who they were. Have dinner with them, to hear the kids sing to me and to us. And my impression coming away is the vast majority of people down here, the vast majority, whether they call themselves Warren Jeffs FLDS or not Warren Jeffs, whatever you call yourself, you're good people who want to be allowed to raise their children, to have, to make a living, to follow their beliefs, to do good, to do charitable service to other people. They're good people. Many have been abused by bad people, I believe. But the people are good. And thank you, sir, for your comment. You're absolutely right. You can overlook these differences and come together and find a solution to this problem. And I believe, in my heart of hearts, and I'll be long gone as AG, but that somehow the majority of people in this community will understand Warren Jeffs for what he is and what he did to them, and that they will move on. And the only way that's going to happen is through people in this room making that happen, through educating and loving their neighbors and helping them understand those facts. I'll get off my soapbox.
All right, we have one last comment, and go ahead. Actually, I was going to let you guys have the final words, so... Would you like to speak now?
I'll use my final words.
You are not going to have a final word.
We need to get Mark. Thank you. I think it's going to be a pretty sad day if we don't take a pretty hard look at a couple of facts that need to be presented. First of all, whether we like it, agree with it, or dislike it, there's no one to look at the job that Mark Sherliff did and not know that he did that in good faith. The first time I ever heard his name was a meeting with Governor Mike Leavitt. He came to this community, and he told us that there was this excellent Attorney General that was going to be running on the same ticket. I was with a dinner with Uncle Fred, and he strongly vouched for Mark's character. He and I have had many discussions on all sides of the issue. But the heart of it was, this people was abandoning. They didn't know it, they still don't know it. But the attorneys knew it that represented us. And they wrote a pleading letter to the Attorney General pleading for him to take a look at a crisis in southern Utah where people were going to be kicked out of their homes, that the leadership was abandoning them. They were allowing the lands to go into default debtment. And he had the guts to step up and do something. Try to find that in the political world today. What thanks him? We're here tonight because he's sat and given a lot of people some room to recognize where they're at. He's out of office. I would be surprised if we'd get another opportunity in this valley to ever thank you for doing what he thought was right when he saw men, families being ripped apart. It wasn't an opposition attorney that asked for the help. It was the attorneys that we hired in this valley that pleaded with him to take a look at what was going to happen that didn't happen because of what he did. He said he's out of office. And I, for one, would like to invite us and thank you, Mark Sherliff, for giving us a chance to work this thing out. As far as the issues with... There's a lot of issues. But I'd like to thank all the city officials that came here to welcome me. The local law enforcement that is here to help. Thank you. Isn't it obvious what the problem is? The last speaker touched on it. Where are they? We're here talking about plans to distribute property, to protect water rights, property rights, civil rights, and it's supposed to be done on a local level? There isn't a city council member in the hall. There's not a mayor in the hall. There's not a local officer in the hall. They want to know whether in this meeting was the right place? Pretty obviously, they got the revelation, but they didn't get the email. I think that's funny stuff. John Huntsman Senior wrote a book once, says everything I learned in life, I learned at the sandbox. What do you learn in the sandbox? How to share? How to look at neighbors yourself? How to look out for the just wants and needs of those around you? I submit that if the attorneys would give us the chance with this board, there's no need to say and rack up more money. There's no need, or a minimal need, to sit here and drive litigation in the courts. This trust was ran by a group of trustees in its previous days. Whether it was right or wrong, it was governed with them. It was taken away from them and their options. I strongly believe that if there's people that live in this community, and it will be governed by the people in this community, this plan would work. As far as the opposition, is subdividing the land? There's many that want to hold it in common trust. And with great stress, we listened to what happened to the Navajo Nation. What happened in this valley is a trail of deceit and hurt that has wiped out people's ability to stand up and protect their family. There's thousands of people that have watched their father, without saying goodbye, drive away. Hundreds of mothers that are strung across the United States, calling daily, pleading for some help. And they're falling on the ears of the government. They're falling on the ears of this community. We owe them some help. We don't owe them more debt. I've had an opportunity to sit down with many families, and people would be grateful to give the shirt off their back to make room in their homes. But do they have to have it done by force? Or can it be done with the thing that was taken by Warren Jeffs with him? Love. He took that little word, and he turned it to the opposite. Hate. People have the right to sit and decide who's worthy and unworthy. For now, they don't trust anyone. There's thousands of people that had to make the choice tonight. Do I come to this meeting, or do I leave my wife and my children? How many of you think that this meeting was quickly worth losing your children who can? That was the ultimatum they were given. Whether they're here or not, we'll stand up for them. The government, bless their heart, in my opinion, they knew what was in that escalate. And I have to take some deep responsibility myself, but I did out of respect to a religious leader at the time. But they knew. And they were acting in good faith in a lot of issues. And they were faced with some secrecy that takes place behind high walls. Go look at the administration's prior, previous to this. When Roy Johnson was the leader, he put a simple barbed wire fence around these grates to keep the neighbors' horses out. That's all it took. What has this city turned into? A business city of walls. Those walls aren't just physical ones, they're emotional ones. They're every kind of wall you can have. And what is a wall for? Lack of trust. I am very strong that we do not leave this thing as a breeding ground for people to hurt other people. That no trespassing signs that are by the thousands in this community need to be a welcome home. Any plan to protect a father, a mother, a child, to return to this valley will give our life for it. But when this escalated to stop, the government knew what was in that escalate. It is strongly my opinion, whether we wanted to hear it or not, that information needed to be available to us. That there was some terrible, terrible crimes taking place with little girls being tied up and sexually raped. Audio tape and photographs. Then that escalate stopped. The government didn't know what to do with it. It didn't know who the participants was. It didn't know how deep it ran. So it took 468 children away from their parents to sort it all out. We led an aggressive campaign. I won't agree with how they handled it. I believe that there was a lot of things that both sides could come together and make right. We could sit and beat each other to death over the past. What's our future? Our future is what we make it. Why does the land have to be subdivided? The gentleman, the Native American, put it perfectly out there. If I wanted to preserve my home, I don't have that right. I don't have the financial ability, because my home is on a block that's shared with seven or eight other homes. And I have to go pay all their taxes for my home to have the taxes paid. How many of you have got that kind of money around, that you can pay all your neighbor's taxes? There's probably got a wife in it with 20 children that's been abandoned with all the other parents. That's why the land has to be subdivided. It's the only way to preserve it. The debt has to be addressed on a home-by-home level. And I think that I would ask this of the government tonight. You know what our problem is? We're talking about land. Where's our mayors, city council members? Our local law enforcement? And all of this is contingent on what they're willing to go along with. They made their stand by not even being here. Or they've made their stand because it wasn't worth the fight, lose a wife or children to be here. As bad as I resent that the judge asked Bill Richards, was there any way to take over the government of the cities until they could figure this out? Sometimes we're walking over a cliff that we didn't even see coming. But when people see it coming and they can see where we're headed, they're obligated and have done their best to step in and stop that cliff. The nation's facing a fiscal cliff financially. This community is facing a cliff and a wall until you, the government, will control the local government that is nothing more or less than an administration that is run out of Texas in prison. Thank you. And Mark, thank you.
Bill, I think I did promise you the last word, so if you have some closing remarks and then, I just remembered, this is the beginning of a discussion and we hope to continue after this meeting.
Let me start. Let me start by commenting on some of the things raised by our, our last two speakers because obviously there are some very powerful issues, very important issues that were raised in connection with the operation of government. I think I started my comments by telling you that the principles that guide the Arizona Attorney General's Office start first and foremost with the commitment to ensuring that the laws of this country and the laws of this state are enforced and respected and observed equally in this community just as they are in every other community in this state. There are tools available to government, and the Arizona Attorney General's Office has not been shy about using its tools over the years, particularly with respective civil rights violations. I think I can safely say that again, no matter what happens with the U E P Trust, the Arizona Attorney General's Office can be counted on to continue to use the tools available to it, to ensure as much as it possibly can that all citizens here have the same right to respect, that the laws are followed equally and fairly for them just as they are for everyone else in every other community. Those are some of the tools available to, to government at our level. But there are tools available to everybody here as well. You may not feel like it at times, but everybody here has a voice. Everybody here has representatives that are not just in your local city government. You have representatives at the county level, you have representatives at the state level, and you have representatives at the national level. And you each have individually the right, the opportunity, and perhaps even sometimes the obligation to use your voice and make yourself heard, no matter what side of the issue you may be on, but make yourself heard to those representatives. And I encourage you all to do that. With that, again, I guess I would just wrap up my comments by saying I'm very thankful. I think we, we heard an awful lot of very insightful comments, great questions that are gonna need to be answered. And they're gonna require some real thought, they're gonna require more questions, and hopefully, they ultimately will have answers which are as equitable and fair to everybody here and everybody else in their extended community as possible. And I thank you for your participation.
In behalf of the Trust and those that work with the Trust, uh, we appreciate the opportunity of, of being here and, and surrounded here by, uh, Representative, the Attorney General and the Representative of, of the Attorney General. And, uh, I appreciate their, uh, their support and efforts and, uh, as, uh, the Trust, my administration of the Trust, if you will, has proceeded from May of two thousand and five. I've seen some great strides recently in, uh, in, in changes in, in the rule of matters and court decisions that are favorable. Seen law enforcement, uh, appreciate the Mohawk County, the, the presence here in the community. The Trust has noticed a significant improvement in, uh, in, uh, law and order and the rule of law being applied because of, uh, uh, Mohawk County Deputy Speaker. And, uh, and so I appreciate those that have helped make that possible. We, we spend a lot of time and effort assisting those that are pursuing civil rights. Department of Justice, we, we sent boxes of information. I know Arizona is pursuing the case, we spent a lot of time and effort there and, uh, we're hopeful that, uh, that things will be a lot better in the future as far as the rule of law is concerned. And, uh, we're hopeful that, uh, the right decisions that we made were in fact to the Trust and that, uh, the vast majority of you will, uh, will benefit from your participation in, in the Trust. I'll just conclude by saying that I, uh, I will do my very best. And, and, and even though Mark said that everybody in the room hates him, um, I'm not sure that I'm much of a love either. But, uh, I, I've done the very best that, uh, that I could do and I try to be fair and will pledge that, uh, I will do my best to make sure that fairness and equity prevail and that in, in the long run, uh, the rule of law will prevail here. And, uh, again, good thanks to the, to the Attorney Generals and those that are helping make that part. Thank you.
Floyd, I, uh, this one's good.
I turned it off for you.
Yes, I've done. Uh, I, the one thing that would have me run for office again was trying to resolve this issue before I left office, but fourteen years, my, my family, it's their turn to have their dad and grandpa and husband back. And, uh, but I do have that, I'll leave office with this great regret that this hasn't been resolved. But the good news is, you bet some of those who will continue in the office, they are career services assistant Attorney General. They're not appointed by me, they're not appointed by my, my successor, they will continue to represent. Jerry, where'd Jerry Jensen go? Jerry, I asked Jerry to, to be up here to introduce, in, in my place, but I couldn't get here to say hi to you because many of you know him from years and years ago before I became Attorney General. And so, uh, he's, even though he has many other duties, he continues to have an interest in a role in, in, in our meetings. So Jerry, thank you. You bet. Uh, David Sonnenreich, uh, I don't know if you introduced to David Wolf and Joey Jones. Will you two stand up, please? These are two Assistant Attorney General who, uh, work around the clock in, in your interest, the interest of justice. All they care about is the rule of law and justice and trying to resolve these issues. And they will continue to do that. Uh, we've seen, so give them a hand, please. They're not political, never have been. They do their jobs as attorneys, and that's, uh, and I believe they do an exceptional job. Tim Bobb, he's come with us here. Tim, uh, was the unlucky fellow who was a tax expert, but he also happened to know a little bit about trust back, uh, many years ago when, uh, I heard the pleas from Ron Parker and others to step in and do something to protect the beneficiaries. And, uh, Tim, I think we finally just, it just happened to be long. I think, uh, Bill may be able to empathize with that, but I'm glad to see Bill back. And we came very close, uh, many years ago. Three of us sitting here with many of those in the audience, the attorneys, that almost, almost get into a resolution on this, we're glad to see you back. Paul Murphy, who, um, you know, he, you don't hear much about him, but, you know, when, when, uh, when Carolyn Jessup first escaped, I guess is the word she used in her book, he came to me, uh, two thousand and two or three and told me her story. I was, I was thinking as a prosecutor, we're a law enforcement agency, right? I'm a prosecutor. I see Carolyn Jessup, had been married to Merrill, and you know, you know some good facts. You're gonna, you're gonna help me put a case together. But I very quickly learned that she couldn't be a witness for me until she took care of her kids, until she had a place to live, until she had Shakira, and she could feed them, and she could get them to school and get them caught up, and, and there wasn't, there were services available. So, we tried to get the, those human services and social services agencies who are responsible to do something, and frankly, at the time, they wouldn't do it. So it was law enforcement agency. We said, oh, well, they're not gonna do it. We have to somehow figure out how to do it. Paul Murphy took that over, took charge, put together a grant program, be able to get some funding to be able to do that, to be able to provide some law enforcement from, from, uh, Washington County, which we're still here, but for a couple of years, we were able to get that funding to do that. And he started Safety Net, and ultimately now that's gone into very, very capable hands outside in the Attorney General's Office, but Paul continues to be involved in, in his, and they literally serve thousands of people without regard to their religious beliefs or practices, to be there as a safety net, provide services. And there are good people who will continue to do that long after we're gone. There's, there's great people in this community who are holding out hope and providing services and help. It's, I'm confident that things will be resolved. If, uh, if Lily Jessup and I could, could, uh, sit down and have some sushi together, that was really hard for him. He'd never had sushi in his life, but I, I'm glad I made him eat some. And, you know, work out our differences ultimately when, even though, as I said, we were toe-to-toe and clashed early on, and I called him names and he, I don't know if he ever called me names, he was nicer to me than I was to him, but, uh, we came together. I remember, I'll close on this because I didn't think it's possible, and that is, uh, you know, people say, people would look at the situation and say it'd be easier to resolve the Arab-Israeli, the Palestinian conflict, right? People, if you can solve this, we send you a special envoy over there in the Middle East, you can solve anything. But there's always been this kind of attitude that people say, we can't do it. There was an old poem by Richard Kippen called, "East is east and west is west," remember that? And people always use that, east and west, you can't ever come together, you'll never come together. Can't happen. They're fearless. They say it won't happen, huh? And there's a poem to prove it. I totally this poem, and I told some others this poem. I said, you know, go look at the poem, it's, "East and east and west is west, and never the twain shall meet," that's what it says, "till earth and sky compress the leaf that God's great judgment seed." Sounds pretty fine, doesn't it? But you forget the rest of it. There's a "but" after that. "But, there is neither east nor west, borders nor breed nor birth, when two strong men come face to face, till they come from the ends of the earth." Men, women, people of good feeling, that's, that's the message of east and east and west is west, is that you can't come together like this good brother reminded you tonight. I'm confident of that. I'll continue to watch. If any, I can do anything in, in a private sector that I can do, I don't know, maybe I'll come back, Bill, maybe they can pay me to come back. Uh, to help resolve the issue, but, uh, it's a good start, and I know we'll continue. So Paul, thanks for the organization. Thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, if, what, what?
Yeah. I'm, I'm not an attorney, I'm certainly not eloquent as, as a public speaker of, of Mr. Jermell here, but, uh, he, we started going through a, a list of names of people that helped him and his, uh, uh, organization, and so I would be extremely remiss if I didn't indicate to you the hundreds of hours that our advisory board has put in over the years. I mean, they have...
They're here.
They, they are here, and I would like them to stand. I seek the Lloyd, Margaret, Katie, Todd, Don, Timpson, um...
Stand up, let's be honest. Thank you.
Anyway, um, and, um, a couple of board members are not here. You mentioned Carolyn Jessup, and we have Bob Hennelston from the, uh, St. George Community, former president at Dixie College, but they really have put in the utmost effort with no thanks whatsoever and spent a lot of time in your behalf. And, uh, any, any, uh, program or model or distribution matrix that we work out to, to a large extent is, is coming from them. And, uh, one other, one other person, uh, that, uh, has been absolutely incredible, well, a couple of people that have assisted the Trust, Jethro Bartlow, I think is here. Where are you, Jethro? Jethro? He's not at the basketball game, but a little, a little guy. Just absolutely, uh, very, very bright, capable person who's given, uh, great counsel over the years. And, uh, he's my right-hand man. And my left-hand man is Isaac Wyler, who, who, uh, is the kind of the field man of the, uh, the Trust and has, has also put in just tons of time, has suffered, uh, lost animals, uh, um, trucks and vehicles that have been, uh, I, I don't wanna say, I'm trying to think of the word, but tires have been slashed, nails have been put underneath tires, uh, items cut from the vehicle, so trying to disable his vehicle, lost animals and so on and so forth. So he, he's been an open face in the community and has suffered accordingly because of that. But, uh, these are great people that have done a lot and continue to do a lot to help the Trust. So, uh, if Mark is going to rock his people, I'm going to lot and double lot those white people, okay? Thank you.
By the way, Ken Lindstrom, I know you were tweeting this event. I was kidding about being paid to come back, so Ben, don't tweet that.
We would like to thank the panelists, thank the, uh, staff of the El Capitan School, and thank you for saving, keep yourself up around applause. Let's call it a night.